Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a privilege to moderate this evening's regularly scheduled city council meeting, which I will officially call to order at 6:02 PM on this, the 13th of September 2018. We'll officially begin with our roll call. Let our city partners conduct that course.
Hey, Judy Costello?
Yes.
Jason Daly?
Here.
Joe Shai?
Here.
Mike Parson?
Here.
Fiona Fander Hunter?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Also present. We do have a full forum, so we'll proceed with our pledge of allegiance. Let me take all three sides. The questions, do you guys get to read them?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll officially begin with our mayor's report.
That's a change of chair. Sorry. I apologize. I apologize. That's ridiculous.
As I sit here and squeak it.
I apologize. I was trying to work it out every night. So sorry. So sorry.
All right, well, with that, I've got three items. First involves the status of our building official research. It's a council meeting of the period. So, an update on the status of building official search. I put that at the top of the list. I've been out of town for the past 11 days, but I still recall that at the end of our last council meeting, those of you who are in attendance, there were some allegations made that the mayor and others in the city staff have been lying to you about efforts to reach out and research other options we had. And I just wanted to clear the record and make it hopefully reassure you that efforts are ongoing for the city of Chehalis as our number one option with regard to a potential replacement to our current building inspection person. And if the council members would like to have the contact for that, I'd invite you to reach out and communicate with that person directly. So, that's the latest. We're still waiting for them to get their position, their personnel in place to extend their offer to our community. And we have, I can tell you, been contacted by the city of Naperville, and they've informed us that they are not in a position to offer any such service to the city of Vader until after, at the earliest, if ever, the 1st of January 2018. So, that's where we're at. And if you have any questions, just feel free to reach out.
And we have the availability to call the city of Chehalis if we would like to speak to them?
Yeah, at this point of contact, sure.
Okay.
However, I should let you know that that would be outside the normal function of an elected legislator, a city council member, but you're... Hey, it's pretty country.
Okay, let me think about this. You can reach out and call him, but hey, we can't call him. No.
Read your handbook if you're curious about that. So, item number two, report on the old vigil painting project. I understand that it, I saw that Judy, as you noted, had completed the painting of the chair.
We did.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you for that.
We did, and I would like to thank Linda Smith and Stella and Mike Little for all of their work. And Mike went and redid all the fascia board on the end and the whole backside and painted it.
Wow.
So, yes, yes. So, I'm very happy with both guys. Linda and I have a gallon and a half left of paint, and in the next couple of weeks, we're going to do the pavilion. We have enough to finish to put a whole coat of paint on the pavilion.
Wow.
Because it needs it too.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent report. Item number three, update on the grass seed watering. When I last left, I think there was concerns that the grass was not going to germinate. There was valid concerns, I think, given the drought and heat that we've been experiencing. But we set in motion a plan to get it watered, and we carried that out until Mother Nature has taken over for us, not one would, hopefully not today. But if not, we're, I've noted when I checked this morning, there was some grass emerging from it, so let's hope that that continues. So, that's the report on the grass seed watering. I'd like to thank those, I guess, Rich Price, who was volunteered to assist with that. But right now, our city employee, John Plant, is watering it as the need is evident. So, that's that.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you have any follow-up on Pastor Tracy's problem? Because that seemed to be an expensive question.
Right. He's been working that out with Devin Jackson, and I have not got an update since I ran back. So, that's what I'd tell you, but I know that they're working on it.
Okay.
Do you have anything?
I don't have anything to do on that.
Okay. Yes, well, that concludes the mayor's report. Let's proceed with the council reports, if there are any.
I just have, I just have two items.
Okay.
The first, you covered on the jail, thanking Linda and Stella and Mike. The second is, I'd like to report that I spoke to each and every person that got up at our last meeting on their three minutes and talked to them about whatever their problem was. I don't know that anything got resolved, but we all spoke.
Excellent.
And then, the last but not least, this letter came to me today, signed by 25 residents of Vader, mostly on B Street. And I understand after I arrived at the meeting tonight, that it is now all over Facebook and a couple of different Facebook pages, burning out, heavy burning out of rubber and tires and everything up in front of the old Victorians. The big concern was the reckless driving of those two kids, those two boys, and the fire danger and the children who live right there in those couple houses. That is a problem over there, and I believe, I've spoken to Mr. Butterfield about it, and he said, "Some of this we need to handle, we need to handle along with that."
Who's Mr. Butterfield?
Oh, I'm sorry. Our sheriff.
The sheriff.
I provided him with the coffee.
Cheese man.
I provided him with the coffee with this. Cheese man, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize.
All right. Okay, I'm on the same sheet.
Are you on the sheet? That's what pick up with me on this. Anyway, I provided Mr. Cheese Man with this, so he's well aware of all of the details, and he did speak to Mrs. Smith.
Perfect.
So, this is really, this is really loud. Is this really loud? It's kind of echoing down to this.
Really?
Thank you.
Well, if you can hear the day, just reach out.
And that's my report.
Thank you for that. We'll follow up with it, and grateful to those who've put their use on this. It's bold, and as it should be, it's very impressive. We will definitely follow up with it. I dare say that it's probably not the only location that has experienced that. If you drive around the streets, you'll note that there's donuts and burned rubber in a number of other areas. So, maybe I'll talk to Deputy Cheese Man, too. Thank you for that. All right, and with that, let's move on with...
I just have one comment to make. There's a couple that I've seen several times this summer. I do not know who they are, do not know where they live, but they're out walking around any day where the weather's nice with their little garbage bags, walking along, picking garbage up out of the, you know, wherever they see garbage laying around, they pick it up and put it in their bag. So, if anybody knows who...
The star of the neighbors.
Oh. Would you please tell them that it has been noticed, and we totally appreciate it? I think it's wonderful that they take their time to do that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. I'll bring that to our attention.
Yeah. Thank you.
If we could get that name, maybe.
It's Randy and Kathy. I don't know their last name.
Hall.
Oh, it's Hall? Brandy Hall?
Yeah. Randy and Kathy.
My dog's neighbor. That's their last name.
The new, one of the newest.
Yeah, round the corner there.
And right, your name, the one.
And they do it daily. Yeah.
Yeah, they come down, throw the ball for the dog, bring down garbage, throw in my garbage can.
It's wonderful that they do that, that they give up their time to do that, so. And they, I haven't even noticed as much as they're able to pick up, so, you know.
Yeah, I think they take a different street every day.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
They also stay in their street cap.
They do. Very nice.
Very good. Well, on that positive note, let's proceed with our agenda approval for tonight's city council. We can't fly, I guess.
I'd like a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for 9/13/2018.
And Mrs. Parson has submitted a motion to approve that this evening's agenda is written. We have a second for that motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Now, the minutes approval for our previous city council meeting and our special city council.
I'd like a motion that we approve the minutes for the special city council meeting from 8/17/2018 and from the city council meeting from 8/23/2018.
Mr. Daly submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written, as noted. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Parson.
I have a comment, please. I would like to amend the minutes on the special meeting, please.
Okay.
I was x-ed out as absent, unexcused.
Oh, that's an error. I apologize. It should be excused.
Okay, could, could you handle that for me, please? And I would be very happy.
Consider it done.
And may I make another small comment? I won't be able to vote on this motion because it's got the word "and." We didn't do them separately.
Well, you could...
I'm going to vote.
You included your motion. You're voting.
I'm not going to be able to vote on the special meeting because I wasn't here.
You can still vote on the minutes.
You can.
Yeah. You can still vote on the minutes.
Okay.
So, we're amending the minutes from as written to...
That's the motion to change, amend, well, we've already got the motion on the table, but you're suggesting that it's contingent upon the changing of the portion of the minutes to reflect excused. Is that clear, councilman?
Yes.
Yeah, do I need to change my motion, or?
No, I don't need it.
At least go ahead.
With that amendment, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Or that motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, now, voucher approvals for the first half of September 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the first half of September 2018 in the amount of $234,821.69.
Mr. Shai submitted a motion to approve the expenditures that were not noted. We have a second for that motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. We have one special report from Deputy Cheese Man. We'll run it up to the monthly, most high sheriff's report.
Do they have to?
They do.
Well, August was a sort of quiet month, but I'll address your other letter here, too, a little bit, too. So, we had 279 contacts, two calls on shift and seven calls off shift, for a total of only nine calls for the month. Out of us, there's two crimes, one with a burglary, or two burglaries. One was arrested, so there's a felony arrest on here, and the other is still under investigation. We had 22 traffic stops, and that's why this is sort of new to me, because we were working up here on this end right here, and wrote six infractions and had three misdemeanor arrests. One with a warrant, and then a couple suspended drivers. So, that gives you August. And so, yeah, so we was working this traffic spot up here, and I had no idea about this traffic spot down here. So, in regards to the deal here, when I said that we don't have control, or is that they're saying that he has some sort of business there? And I don't know whether the city has a business license with him for some sort of car business or something like that. So, that would be, that would be the city aspect of it. And if there's numerous cars, then that's a code compliance issue. If there's a lot of cars in that park, there, that's code compliance. About the traffic side of it, let me explain a little bit what makes traffic so hard. Most traffic in the state of Washington is decriminalized. It's called an infraction, which is a civil infraction. So, a civil infraction cannot be enforced by anybody but law enforcement. So, that means that in order for someone to say that they're speeding down the road, and I need to, I want you to arrest them for speeding, I can't do that. I have to. I have to witness that side of the deal. Or if they make a wrong turn or something like that, because there's civil penalties. Basically, we write a ticket, and it's not criminal, it is civil, and the only repercussions that come from that is if you don't pay your ticket, then eventually Department of Licensing will suspend your license. So, then that's where it becomes criminal in the aspect of, well, now you've got too many tickets, unpaid tickets, and now they suspend your license. Now, it becomes criminal, which there are criminal cases of traffic DUI, negligent driving, and reckless driving. Now, in criminal, you have to, in this state, prove beyond a reasonable doubt, which is a very high, high standard. So, even though someone, you see someone driving and they're doing that, we have to have a witness that actually knows the person that's driving it and can testify in court to that. Otherwise, otherwise, that's the only way that we can act on something that isn't then in our presence. So, it makes it, it makes it tough, but I will take the shifts, tell them that they need to start working B Street and 6th Street so that they can work on that area now and stop traffic, so.
Deputy, I note that on their letter, that they indicated they called when apparently somebody was engaging in that, and there was, it says, "No show."
Yeah, and I've tried to find that call of the people that called in, and I haven't been able to find that.
But you're seeing right over there.
Yeah, yeah. And I did find, I did just find one for that address, and then I wanted to clarify some reason on this, is that you have to remember, dispatch is not our entity. So, when you call in, you're calling into a 911 dispatch center, that's not, we have no control over that. So, if they don't put your name down, we don't, we don't get it attached to our system, so I can't search it and I can't find it, so.
The police officer did come to our house.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Raise your hand, would you?
So, basically, I haven't been able to find that call. I'm not saying that it wasn't done. I just haven't been able to search it under the names given to find out where that call is. That call may be there someplace, but it's under something different that dispatch put it under, so I'm not saying that the call did happen. The call did happen, I just can't find it right now, so.
The, 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 the public, the length, and the, or here, the city council.
Okay, I just have a quick question. What if they were to video it? What if somebody right there took a video?
If you video it, and you have a good picture of the driver, a facial, a good facial picture of the driver, yes, we can work off of that.
Okay.
But if you just have a video of this car and nothing of the driver, because even though you can run the license of the driver, you can't, you can't, you can go to the registered owner, and the registered owner can say, "I don't know, I had some trouble driving." And we can only give the ticket to the person that committed the crime, because we have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that they did that.
Okay.
And if they, now, did you want to, council want to hear from the public?
The officer did come to our house.
Okay, and you're at which address?
603 B Street.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we also have video of it. Nobody was in danger. We spoke to the police officer in length, and also, we also informed him about the gentleman that was complaining, had been running the stop sign repeatedly.
Oh, okay.
Every day, he goes through it. We have video of that.
Oh.
And he's upset because of that, too.
So, you're...
Right?
You're not doing it...
There's a paper.
No, we're not going to resolve this.
I know, but I'm just saying, that's what's going on.
Yeah, if I can talk, if I can talk to you afterwards, that'd be fine.
Sure, that'd be great.
Great, okay, well, wonderful. Thank you for your interest in preserving the peace and tranquility of our community. Great.
Any other questions?
Was, real quick question, was the burglary, did they get caught down in the ditch? Is that that one?
Yeah, that's our one.
Okay. Because I saw a car in the ditch, and I started to pull over, and they said, "No, they're in the burglary." Okay, perfect. So, I stuck them in the ditch. I don't like it.
All right. Okay, sometimes a crime doesn't pay. All right, then with that, let's proceed with our city business. Item number one, council to consider draft budget calendar. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review that, so I know that City Park has prepared that as you're accustomed to, now at the time when we get to decide what meetings and when to hold in order to get our budget completed for 2018.
I, I had a little question. Why are we canceling our meeting on the 27th? Is that customary?
We have done that every year.
It's just a suggestion.
So, it says...
No, you don't have to.
Well, and then I read the next line, and it said, "Budget," and underlined "must," be adopted by the December 31st, so.
That's why the 13th said, "Adopt budget."
Well, I was just, I'm thinking out loud here that what would happen if it didn't get adopted?
If it didn't get adopted on the 13th, then you have to call another meeting.
Yeah.
Like, I should wait and stay till 10? Okay. I've been like, I can't believe it's time to do this again. We just did it. I swear, we just did this.
Yeah, the time flies, but.
This works for me.
Me also. I have no problem.
I've got no problem. I like it. Ooh, we've got, we've got three consensus nods here.
The only, the only comment, another comment I might have is, is we only, we only have like a half hour before the meeting, or...
It's an hour. Right? One, seven, five.
Five, okay, so one hour before the meeting, okay. I thought I read somewhere, it's only like a half...
Two hours, you mean?
Yeah, for the, okay.
So, you're okay?
I'm okay.
Well, then, I don't know that we need a motion to approve the draft.
No, no, make your report finally.
So, we've got a consensus, and if, in the course of this, it appears that it's not accomplishing what needs to happen, we can apply.
The public hearings have to be public.
Yeah, otherwise...
Well, the November 9th public hearing is actually November 8th.
Oh, you're right. I have to stay around the last day. That's the 8th, 9th. Thank you.
Good job. Get your glasses on, too.
I missed that, too. What was the...
Oh, November 9th, or November 8th is the public hearing, but on the left, the date is listed as November 9th, which is actually November 8th.
Okay, with that, and it goes back to number two.
Can I make another comment? If anybody wants to bring their folders back from last year, I'd be happy to reuse them, or I could buy some folders.
I'll bring mine back. Don't spend the money.
Is it a three-ring binder? Yeah. I'll bring one in. I don't... I mean, I have some, but I usually end up getting new ones every year, but I'm sure they just sit there, like, in your closet somewhere. If you want to bring them back, I'll reuse them.
I read mine.
Do you? Okay.
You reuse it?
No, every Friday night, I read it.
Well, I read mine on Mondays, but, you know, it's not worn out yet.
I read mine right before bed to go to sleep.
All right, that's interesting. So, with that, all right, then let's proceed to item number two, council to consider the Vision Software Utility Billing Proposal. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read and simulate the document that explains, well, the news that's arising. I know in the past couple of years, it's noted to you that our current system is outdated, 30-plus years old, and so it's now reaching the end of its usability, and so if you want to explain the greater details, share it here.
Well, for the public who maybe didn't have a chance to read it yet, you said our, our utility billing system is a system, a DOS system written in the 1980s. I don't know exactly when the city purchased it, but that's when it's been around. The last time they updated, made any updates to it was 1992, I believe, the year. And so, we've been running on this system since then, and, you know, the system has now, it was called ASP, and now the company has kind of changed its name. It's called Vision. We have purchased in the past, in 2011, we purchased the Vision Municipal Financial System, and that's what we use for our financial reports and tracking all of our financials. But we have to track them manually from the ASP system to the Vision system, because they don't talk to each other, which is a totally different kind of program. Vision has been on our case, meaning me, because I'm the one that gets to call every time that something goes wrong with it, to update, and that they're not going to keep supporting ASP anymore. They do continue to help me. Probably get a call about once every two months to them where something's wrong, gone wrong, and I can't get it to print, I can't get it to report, whatever we needed to do. So far, the figures all seem to still remain accurate, but with the most recent updates to Windows, I can't get it to print, and like I stated, and there, I've had three different IT people working on it, trying to get, trying to get it to continue to talk to our printer, and it just won't do it. So, at this point, we have one computer that will still print, to print from that program once that's gone. I'm assuming that when some updates get, go through with her computer, that the same thing's going to eventually happen, and then we're not going to be able to print at all. So, I'm just, I think we've waited to the very last minute. We've been putting them off for years and years and years about updating our utility billing system. I think there's only like three communities that still use this billing system that are still kind of milking it along, yes?
Have we budgeted for this, knowing that this is going to be an issue? Have we put money away in...
We have not put money away specifically for this. We do have funds in, you know, we do have funds that are in the savings that we have been saving up for, for projects or, or activities that we need. It was, I think that it's something that we have to do, you know, pretty soon, whether it's this program or another program, just because it's failing to work, and we just can't. We've got to find a way to budget for it. I'm just bringing this up to you, because if you, if you guys are happy with this, then we can move forward with, you know, budgeting for this. And you see that there's a, a two-year option, a three-year option, and a five-year option for spreading out some of those costs. Yes?
My question is, could you explain this page, which is the software and the professional services? Are we looking at, because on the options to pay back, it's the 4,500, but here, there's a $7,800-plus figure, and I'd like to know what is...
The way that I'm understanding it is that they are willing to, because the things that we have to pay upfront, no matter what, the first, you know, when it happens, we have to pay the 1,500 for the training, the electronic conversion, which is converting all of the data from the one system to the other, and that's 1,500 as well, and then the configuring the SQL to 375. I don't, I haven't verified yet. I'm not sure that they, if we're going to have to pay for that or not, if they give us the SQL for free.
But that part is upfront?
That is the stuff that has to be paid upon completion. It says, if you look on page three, which is the final page there, it's listed that that has to be paid the first year period. So, it's the, it's 4,500 is the cost that they're saying that the vision is going to be itself. And you see that on, on the first page that you were looking at, 6,000, and then they're giving us a $1,500 discount. So, that's 4,500 they're allowing us to pay over time if we want to, which is the actual So that's $4,500 they're allowing us to pay over time if we want to, which is the actual cost of the software itself.
Was there a tech support cost, like a yearly cost?
That's the $900 software assurance number that you see there to the right. And that is every year in addition.
To, to paying back, okay?
Yeah, that's a, that's an annual cost, $900. Now, if we were to sign this agreement and start it with them as of October 1st, they would prorate that for the last three months of the year. But then in January, $900 will be due for 2019, so every year.
And if we chose the five-year payment plan, it would be $900 a month?
Yeah, that's what I read first, too, an annual.
What, but that's annual?
She's saying it's annual.
I think what they're willing to let us, oh, I, okay.
Yeah, it says $4,500, five years, $900. And so when I looked at that, it reached me to be $900 a month.
$500, not $4,500.
It says, it says somewhere in there, a month.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question. This software assurance is separate from any of the two-year, three-year, five-year plans. It has to be paid, that also has to be paid every year.
What does that include? What is, what are they giving you?
That includes, they're keeping the programs and running with the current software programs that people have on their computers and making any corrections or making any improvements on the software. And then ITs are basically, so we can call them and find out, you know, if we're having problems with the program. They can get on and fix it.
So they don't, they install this program, but they're not saying, okay, for the first two years, there won't be any charge or anything? They're just saying, we start off paying immediately for us to come in and fix anything that's wrong with it?
Well, and for the updates that they have to do, yeah, I mean, that's standard policy. We pay, we already pay the $1,500 every year for this software assurance on the financial system. And then we'll be paying them the $900 in addition if we get-
So it's cheaper?
It's cheaper. They, they, it was $1,500, but my planning has gotten to now to $900.
Okay, so the $900 will replace the current $1,500 we've had for Vision?
No, it's in addition.
So we're going to pay $2,400 a year to Vision to have their software?
Yes. But what we can, what we can be certain of is that it's going to be the most, it's going to be up to date and current and everything's going to continue to work. And if it doesn't, they'll come and fix it, so.
Do we have an observation from the public, the council, like to hear?
Certainly.
If you didn't budget for this, and you were thinking of saving, is this also coming out of the sewer money?
It's a sewer, it's sewer billings, it'll have to come out. It has to come out of sewer funds, that's one place it can come from.
Okay, so that money?
Same.
So that it'll be part of what the budget is for?
Does it come in?
Uh, question. Where is this server located? Is it in City Hall here, or is it somewhere else?
I'm not sure I understand the technicality of the question. The server. Uh, it will be installed on my computer here, and then there, it will be networked to the second computer that we have in the office.
The Vision, and the Vision people are in Spokane?
They're in Spokane.
Um, let's see here. From saving, Vision has offered to waive the cost of the SQL server upgrade. If we agree to the Vision billing upgrade, we also definitely want us to get off ASP billing. They're very willing to give us SQL for, for free. Where is, is, the, the server, is that in some off-site location, or is the server here?
Here. If I understand what you're asking is here. It's all going to be, we have one main computer here, and then we have a second computer that's networked into it. Okay. So, yeah. It's the names are all here in City Hall.
Nobody relishes this server. We prefer not to have to deal with it, but we've known it's coming and it's just now is the time when it's acting up. I can attest to the fact that over the past three to four years, about, like you say, about every two months, it starts to melt down and we get on the horn with the representatives. And they work. That works, I would say, walking you through, trying to get this thing to keep working.
So if I understand this right, for us to fix our problem that we have now, it's just the upgrade of $1293.60? And then if we wanted to do the utility billing, then, then that's-
So we have two issues right now. We have, with the financial system itself, it's not the billing, it's just to track our financials. That's the one that requires that $1293 or whatever. And right now, it's an annoyance, is what's the problem that I'm having with it. It's an annoyance because it keeps giving me error boxes that I have to clear every time I want to pull a report and every time I want to change parameters of the report to make it specific to what we need. It, it's kind of just an annoyance at this point. However, it's also not having the updated SQL server on that program, on the financial system. They informed me, I asked them, "Why do we need an SQL server and why do we need to update it?" And they said, "First of all, it's the brain of your program and it's critical. And we are not able to update to their most current version." And we're paying them $1,500 a year for because we don't have the current SQL. We have an old SQL server. And so they're not able to update the most current version of their software to our computer because we have an old SQL. And once we get that updated, then we'll have the current version. So that's, you know, we're hindering ourselves there in that we don't get to have what we're paying for until we update that SQL. So that, the SQL is separate from the, the utility billing. So then on top of that, the utility billing is having a serious meltdown that I, I don't feel like we can take much longer. I'm, I'm hoping that, whether you guys want to do this one or a different one, we need a new billing system. So this is just one that would be the easiest because it's the same program as our financial system. They'll talk to each other, the people already know us and our computer and everything that's going on with it. Our financial system will easily communicate. There will be a lot of inputting and stuff that we won't have to do anymore because it will automatically happen between the two programs. They'll automatically talk to each other because it's part of the same system. So that in those, in those respects, it's much simpler. Is it my favorite system out there? I have really haven't looked at a whole lot of other systems, but I, there's probably easier systems to use out there. However, they don't, they won't talk to our financial system. So I, I don't think that it's, you know, I think it's a good system. It's solid, lots of communities use it throughout the tri-state area and, and maybe further than that as well. But they're a big, well-known company that has a good reputation. So I'm confident with using them. They brought their price down quite a bit. As they've been trying to get, they've been giving us close for two years and every time I'm like, "It's just too much, I can't take that number to council." So then they'll bring it down a little bit. And they'll bring it down a little bit more the next time. And so this, they've come down quite a bit. So I feel like it's a good price.
That's just being turned in.
So I know it seems like a lot, and it is a lot, but we've got to get a new feeling to see what it comes down to, so. It's up to you guys. If you guys are okay with this, I can move forward with putting together a resolution to approve the contract for the next council meeting. And we can work to budget it into the 2019 and beyond budget. That, that's what I would anticipate if you wanted to do this. Not to do it at the first year and have a part of the, start of the 2019 budget.
Well, we definitely need to get this in the budget.
Okay. Well, thank you for the research and explanation. It's been appropriate and well done and helpful. So, thanks for getting to make these financial decisions.
It doesn't have to be an official motion at this point. All I need to know is, counsel, do you want to go ahead and report? If, if so, then I'll prepare the documents for an official motion at the next meeting. If you want to, or if you want to find out more information or whatever, we can do that, too.
Okay, my comment about this is, is most of us up here are business people, with the exception of our tech friend, Joe. And so I'd like to know if he has a comment about this, because this is foreign to me, other than the price tag.
I have, over the last several years, I have researched other financial systems that government agencies use. And there, there are other ones that are less expensive. But to be, to integrate both the utility side of things and the financial side of things, you would either need to change the financial side or you would need to go with Vision. That way they, so we can either buy one software package or buy two software packages. And so there are ones that are fully integrated that are less expensive than Vision, but we would have to change our financials, which could be a headache for our office staff. But if you're looking at, you know, $800, $900 a year versus $2,400 a year, but it would still cost us $8,000 upfront to buy the software. So it doesn't really matter what you do, it's going to cost a lot of money upfront. And then you have to retrain everybody on everything.
Oh, and for training, will you and Tammy both go?
They'll come here, we can pay them to come travel for me to Washington and train them.
And the less expensive options, they don't have, they don't do that. It's all online.
Okay. I hope that gives you enough to think about. What are the council individual thoughts on preparing a resolution for our next council meeting?
I say yes. Business, you got to do it.
There's one. What are your thoughts on preparing?
It needs to-
Well, I've worked with outdated systems and it needs to be done. When they get outdated and they won't help you anymore, you're in trouble.
And I don't think you can milk much more out of DOS.
I know, right?
I can't even refer to DOS.
I don't like DOS.
Yeah, I think DOS, really.
All right, well, we've got three, yeah, that's a consensus, so we'll press ahead and you can deliberate more. And we have that document in front of you. We'll get as detailed as we possibly can. All right. Thank you for your time. All right, let's move on to the treaty.
I thank you, and Tammy, thank you. We very much appreciate it.
We're continuing to discuss the Len Yarzley disposal calendar, which I know was wrestled with our last council meeting. So I know if I recall correctly, there were some assignments that had been accepted and we're going to report back this evening, I think.
I was thinking that we were going to get a calendar together, Leona, to, to set up dates for when, when it was going to be open.
Yeah, and Leona didn't do that.
And Bill didn't either, so.
Well, I like your honesty.
But you know, I'm thinking at this point, we've kind of missed that opportunity. I think now it's a matter of just making sure we have it ready to go come spring. I don't think there's much at this point that, that we can do. I mean, I know, I don't want my husband standing out in the pouring rain with his chainsaw or running a chipper in the pouring rain. So I think at this point, which he did agree he would be happy to do, by the way. I talked to him about it and he thanked me very much for volunteering him, but- Said he would be happy to do that. But I have a feeling now, I don't know about everybody else, but we fall ours to the dump and, you know, you can't leave it sitting out in the rain. You've got to do something with it. So I think our opportunity to get that going has passed now and we need to make sure we have it ready to go come spring. That's my feelings personally.
Okay. Well, then, maybe we could just continue to work on a proposed calendar starting in 2019? Maybe in the next month or so, get that squared.
Yep, get a volunteer list going and, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Too bad, I still have my Christmas tree that I've been waiting to take down there.
Did you use your free dump voucher? Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, use that voucher.
Yeah.
So is there an assignment made to have somebody focus on that? So that it doesn't just fall into the black hole and people that are in the black hole?
Nobody does anything, it's simply somebody else.
Well, I just want to make sure that it's-
Well, Judy and I think are volunteering, I'm sorry.
So good at this. You may volunteer.
We can get together and we can start a calendar type list and get something generated and maybe start a volunteer signup sheet. Does everybody agree on the $5 alone?
In amount?
I mean, unless you got a truck full and a trailer full, then it would be $10. But you know, if it's just a truck full, $5, if it's just a trailer full, $5. And then when you come in to get your compost, it's $5. Oh, now.
The fee enforcement, of course, is going to be a challenge. They're, they'll want to know if it's stuffed down or is it, can't be by weight, I suppose.
But somebody would be watching the trailer.
If it's a truck or a trailer, it wouldn't matter. Just a truck or a trailer.
I think that would lower it to be $5. But if it's a, third, well, this time we don't have trucks. We'll figure it out.
If it's a Toyota versus a Big F, one city is $5.
I think it'll all average out.
No, it's pretty simple.
Is residential use, not commercial use?
Yes, yes.
Within city limits?
Within city limits, yeah.
And $5 is cheap because I just paid $38 to dump the truck and the trailer full of branches. So $5 is a good deal.
I agree, and it's a lot to the dump and it adds up to $30 for, yeah. Okay.
So Leona and Judy are going to work on that?
Absolutely. And I don't know about Judy, but I'd like to see it start like in May.
Okay.
Maybe in 2019? Not March?
Okay, March.
Okay, all right, so that's counsel's call.
Again, it'll probably depend on how wet it is.
Okay, all right, we're good. Thank you for your willingness to assist with that. Now, item four, also a continued agenda item, update on the home-based business regulations. Were you going to reach out to the county?
I spoke with Gary Stamper twice. He called me on my way here. He's talking with Matt-
Mattioshi.
Mattioshi. And I told him good luck with that because he hasn't shown up for a few meetings. So I kind of threw him under the bus, but show up and I won't do that. So they're excited about it. And any way they can help, they will. And they, we're going to get together in the next couple of weeks to talk more in detail.
Okay. So progress from your perspective?
Progress right now, it's not on the top of my mind because we're-
I'm, I'm confused.
Okay.
Are we confused, are we all confused? Are you confused with me? Are you, okay, I'm more confused. What is, what is-
All right, they're the spokesman.
What does the county commissioner have to do with the home-based business? I missed all of that.
During the last meeting, we talked about the county being able to give us grants to help pay for the attorney fees and other things like that, that we were looking to see about them helping us get this done and-
Was that the last meeting?
You were.
Post me. Gee, Mike, this, I don't remember any of this.
For the '09 funds that you mentioned?
Well, I remember the '09 funds, but I do not remember attorneys and commissioners and-
Attorneys?
No, I don't remember any of this. What, what do we?
Okay, you see it's-
And part of the, part of the problems that we had with it was the fact that we're spending so much money on attorney fees in order to get all the wording correctly. And he's trying to figure out a way in order to get that part of it paid for.
Maybe you want to hear some clarity on the-
Oh, are we trying to change the zoning for these home-based businesses? Or are they still going to be residential and you just happen to have a business inside the house?
Yeah.
So I guess I'm confused with them. Why do you need to have all that? We already have the ordinance for home-based businesses. Why are you just expanding the list? So we can do something besides a crematorium?
Or gas station.
Because it would be using, having a retail space in a residential district.
We're trying to get the cottage industry theme going on here in Vator.
They're not changing the zoning.
That's right. You wouldn't change the zone, it would still be residential houses. But in order to have a portion of it used as a commercial, in the house, in the residential, as a commercial-
In the house or on the property.
As a commercial or retail location, that's going to require verage change in the development regulation. That's what I'm told.
In that ordinance that we already have, don't we?
Yes. Yes, it's not just a matter of the type of business, but also allowing it to be an open place of business and not be considered as commercial.
What are the certain businesses now, like the babysitting and the daycare and the crematorium and the other? Are those types of business in the existing?
Those are home-based businesses and very, cottage industry has a retail space.
That's good.
Yeah, that's the way I understand it.
Do you have to know what that ordinance number is?
There are several different ordinances that compile the development regulations. I have it in a big folder in the office and I, I think I even have an extra one that I could blow out to you if you wanted to. But it is on, on the website as well, under the development regulations.
Okay.
Counsel, can you do another comment?
Certainly.
Well, I'm just wondering, we've, we've gone from home-based business now to retail.
Well, I'm just wondering, we've gone from home-based business now to retail, which means storefronts. Am I correct?
No, we haven't gone from that to this. That was the original conversation that we had.
No, the original conversation was the home-based.
Okay, let me, let me finish. The original conversation that brought this up was having the billboard out somewhere that showed where all these different locations, all these cottage industries were throughout the city. And so people could go to Doug's place and people could go to. Well, is it, so do you not want me to explain it? Because you still have a confused look on your face.
I am confused, because that was still in the perimeters of home-based business. I never.
It's not, it's not a home-based business if people are coming to your home to purchase things.
That's where.
That's the retail side.
That's the difference between having a home-based business and a cottage industry. Because the cottage industry has a retail space where the public can actually come in and make purchases. So right now, the way the development regulations are, they can only do that in a commercial location. So what they're talking about doing is making it allowable to have a tiny little retail location in your home in a residential district. So that's, that's the difference.
Okay, so is that how, okay, so I'm a little confused now, but that's how Naperville? I didn't get that in Naperville.
Naperville, Pierce County, there's To- which one did you give me? Toledo or Naperville?
We did Naperville.
Naperville. Toledo has one, the.
Okay, so here's what I'm afraid of, 'cause last meeting, I, I've just been hearing all about home-based business, home-based business. And we all, you know, little signs, stuff like that, and everybody got excited. And then it kinda went by the wayside. It was like, okay, we'll just do home-based businesses like we already have the ordinance for. And now, at the last meeting, I heard you say retail. I, I don't hear that in any of the other ordinances that I, I got from the other cities. So retail, is that opening up where we can get all this traffic coming to everybody's house now? Because you have plans for a big business over there. Yours is not some little back yard.
Okay, let's try to.
And so that's what concerns me.
I have plans, I have plans on bringing a lot of revenue into this town, yes. And it's going to help lower bills. It's going to give our budget a big shot in the arm. That's what I wanna do, and.
And that's why Mike.
And there's a lot of people.
Since I have to moderate this, this is turning into a one-on-one.
There's, there's a lot of people.
You made your point, let them finish. The council will meet.
There's a lot of people in town that are very talented, and they would be able to open up some of their, like Reggie, he's a phenomenal woodworker.
Yeah, I don't eat all of that, Mike, honestly. I don't. I'm just worried about all of this traffic being able to show up instead of.
And that's why we're.
When your wife promised it would just be you deliver when people call you, and you sell outside of your residence.
Okay.
You produce your product.
And that's what we do. That's what we do. And I have multiple people a day at the Washington State Fair right now asking, where is Vader? What's going on in Vader? I wanna go see Vader. And they wanna come, they want to come see my farm, but I tell them, no, you can't, we're not open. It's going, you can't have you come to my house for business right now. But I send them to Little Crane, I send them to the community center, I send them all down there. And all those people are going to end up coming into town, and people are going to shop all around, and then we're going to get the revenue from it.
I know it would be easy to turn this into a public hearing on the topic, but it's council's responsibility is your elected representatives from the people to engage in this without getting into a back-and-forth residence. It's only because the council is willing to entertain your thoughts, but let's not take over it and turn it into some kind of judicial action here. There is another, would like to be heard.
Yes, please.
Forgive me if I sound like a third grader, but I'm doing the best I can. Okay, what's terminology? If I buy embroidery toilets, dainty things in my house, that is a cottage industry. But if I open up my living room and say, come in public, see my pretty embroidery, and they buy it, then that's retail. Is that where, if you're just having cottage industries, you're producing the goods, but you're not selling them in your home? That's not your sales site. But when you get permission to sell it, are those two different things, or are they not?
It's pretty much one thing. The cottage industry, like in all those other cities, it invites the people to your house. Right now, you can do your doilies and you can take them to an event or a fair.
I know, you have a special life to produce.
Right.
Woodwork in my garage.
Nope, and you can take them out. But if you want people to come to you, then that's where the cottage industry term has come from.
Thank you.
One more comment?
Absolutely.
So that confused me a little bit, Mike, because I thought in the existing ordinance, sewing was one of the things you could do. And obviously, if you're gonna sell somebody's dress, they're gonna come to your house and you're gonna, whatever, fit it to them or something. Or you're gonna sell something for them and they're gonna come to your house and look at it. And obviously, babysitting, somebody's coming to your house for that.
So, those are service-oriented versus a product. It's a service.
Sewing is still a service.
Sewing is a service, yeah.
So if you sew the doilies and somebody came to your house and looked at them, when does it become a retail?
When you're selling a product.
Like the doilies? Or the hot sauce. So, but now, the current ordinance says we can do sewing.
You can do service, or basically service-oriented.
Things like that.
You can cut someone's hair. You can bring a.
Bury them. Doug can marinate someone's steak for them, but you know, that's a service, but you can't.
Oh, good.
Well, I'm a little bit confused too. I mean, I thought the only time it became retail is if you purchased it wholesale and then turned around and sold it retail. If you're personally making an item, I mean, you can sell it any which way you want, actually.
It's still retail. If we, if you make a product and you sell it, you are supposed to collect a sales tax on that.
So these people with these cottage industries, they are going to keep track of what they sold, items that they personally made and turn in the tax money on that.
They're supposed to. That's between them and them.
Department of Revenue.
Yes, but they are supposed to.
That's why, yeah, that's.
And that's where. We have the, yeah, we have the business license and we have the revenue coming into the city.
Technically, if you sell.
The, the Fourth of July, the May Days, I had to report all of those sales, and a little chunk of it comes to the city.
So if you go out and buy an item and you pay taxes on it, and then you bring it home and you make something out of it, and then you sell it to somebody, then you have to then pay taxes on it.
It's screwy, yes.
That's still, that's the way it works.
I mean, that's, that's it.
Yeah, well.
Well, I understand it if you actually have a brick and mortar store and you are a retail business, because then you're purchasing wholesale and it is your responsibility then to collect the taxes. But home-based business?
Yeah, you still have to.
That's state regulation. The city has no control of that. That's state business.
We do have another comment from some.
My comment really is, what really is the difference is a home-based business, you know, when you have your service or you're, you're selling Avon or things, this is an in-between, trying to say, we don't want retail, you're not gonna have a big public, we're not gonna be the cafe with all this traffic coming in. It's an in-between to change your ordinance in a small way, in a significant way, where you can do a little bit of retail, because as the ordinance is saying now, you can't. So it's just, it's a, it's a little bit from between retail and your ordinance, what it is setting.
Well, what if you're selling on Lewis County Buy, Sell and Trade, or eBay, or Marketplace?
Those are, um, if you sell.
You're still selling.
Yeah, you're selling.
It's not a business, it's not, they're not paying taxes. At this time, the way the ordinance is, you can do online sales.
And not, and not.
It's not, that does fall under what's already allowed you to do. Yeah, you're not inviting people to come to your location to make the purchases. You're selling, you're selling it online. You don't have a storefront or anything like that.
But with selling it online, you, the tax goes to where you ship it. So we don't receive any tax. The city does not receive any tax from those products. So if you ship something to Puyallup, you charge them nine point nine percent. And if you ship something to Chehalis, you charge them eight point four percent. So wherever you're shipping it to, you charge a different tax for that.
And I understand that, but didn't you just say if you're selling online, then you don't have to do all of that?
If you're selling, no, what I was saying was, so we're kinda confusing two different things. There's the state tax regulations that we have nothing to do with. That's between you and the state. That's why we say you have to have a state business license to get a city business license. You say you deal with the tax stuff. And then we've got the city regulations of what's allowed on the property here in Vader.
Okay.
And so, right now, the, the online businesses, if you have a home-based business where you sell stuff online, you're shipping it in and out, that's allowed already, because you're not inviting the public in. So the change is that we're talking about to do the cottage industry or the, whatever you wanna call it, is inviting the public to come to the residential location. And that's why we're so concerned about having appropriate regulations to keep it from getting crazy and out of control and making sure that there's not, you know, that it stays small and not that this isn't something that's gonna impact the feel and the comfort of the neighborhood, that it still remains a neighborhood and doesn't become a big commercial location. So it's gotta stay small within the small regulations, and that's why we're trying so hard to get the verbiage right and have it set up properly to protect the neighborhood, so that it doesn't become a commercial location, like along the main district.
Actually, Jill answered my question. I wanna know, there's a size limit, so doesn't.
That's part of what we're.
That won't be part of the regulations.
Well, I sense that we're clearing up some of the uncertainties here, and I appreciate the input we're getting from Concerned Residents with insights as well. Are we reaching some form of consensus, or do we have assignments that need to continue to be made researching the physiology of the plant ordinance?
We're still working on.
Well, then, we will continue to include this on our agenda as we polish and refine.
And the development regulation notebook is available for reading? Are you gonna get?
It's online as well.
Oh, it's online as well?
So, okay, there's good homework to do.
I would like to.
For the next conversation. Well, and if the council's ready, let's proceed to our next agenda item. That is a proposal to constitute a tree committee for eighty-three trees to. So we conclude that on the agenda for council deliberation.
I don't think we should have a commission to select trees. I think we should just go with what Mr. Durham suggested, which was the red maples, which are perfect trees to have there, and do better.
Yeah, I didn't see the need for a committee yet.
Okay, can I make a comment about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yay, go for it, okay. It has been brought to my attention over the last three or four days that Tracy has picked out a tree that will grow fifty feet tall and has a canopy of thirty-five feet. I'm not thinking Mrs. Radcliffe is gonna love a fifty-foot tree with a thirty-five-foot canopy in front of her bakery.
The next door neighbor bakery.
Do you see what I'm saying? I have lived before where, where my business and somebody planted a tree, the city planted a tree right in my front door. And I couldn't get rid of it till it died. It died. But, but that, that's just a comment.
It died or it got killed.
Died a sudden death. But it's just a comment that I'm thinking about, because I want Mike to bring his cottage industry down to the core area and build on our downtown thing. That's my vision, not over on his home base. That would be my thought, would be, I would love for Mike to bring his, his business downtown and be on one of those empty spots out there. And if Mike chose to do that, he would have a great big tree in his front door.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a seven-foot little tree right now. I mean, I mean, if you're gonna, I mean.
Yeah, I know I'm seventy, but there are people out there that are younger.
It's an empty lot right now. If someone, if someone builds a building there thirty years from now and it's a big tree, they'll cut it down.
I know, but I just look at all of this carrying on. It's just a vicious cycle.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sold on that tree, but I, I think there's some pretty easy research to be done on trees for, for landscape along roads.
And I like the red maples, don't get me wrong. That's a lovely little tree.
I got, I got, I got pictures of red maples here, if you like red maples.
Look how big they are, Joe.
Nice tree. Look, this is, our trees were fifty feet apart before. We could.
Joe, those trees never grew.
Maybe those wouldn't grow either.
Okay, the trees are beautiful, but I think we need to consider who's gonna clean up their leaves. Because, you know, I happen to have two, three trees in my yard that drop leaves like crazy, and it is horrible.
So now we're planting evergreen.
Like a computer visualization, like this is our street.
Well, who's gonna clean up the leaves? I mean, does she always have to walk out every day and rake the leaves up out front of her bakery?
Scenario of putting those trees like that?
There probably, there should be a little bit further back than that because of the root issues.
Okay, the question is.
Anyway.
Do we want a tree committee?
Sounds like we've got one right now.
Apparently, we need a tree committee.
Input from our concern says, if you wanna hear it.
Yes.
That tree there, I mean, you only have about fifteen, twenty feet of what you've added to our property downtown. And that's gonna encroach on anything I wanna build. And you might, it might be twenty years from now, but, you know, why plant something that you know is gonna encroach it on the road or on the road? We want people to build downtown. And we don't want them to come and say, oh, shoot, why don't we do that tree? Or even if they're gonna build left and move it back further, say they can't build that much of a tree. So that's, that's mine. That's not a big tree.
I'm not, I'm not sure what tree won't get big. I'll research somewhere.
Well, that's, yeah. I, I think Caster Rock would be a great, a great opportunity to, because they have beautiful landscaping. I mean, they have. They, the lady, she comes up here and works with the school actually now, and I.
I heard that.
Donna, Donna.
Should we invite her to come and talk to us about trees?
That'd be a great idea, but.
Do you want the council to decide? Do you want a committee to decide, or do you want the board of mayor?
We need to gather information and make a selection and then submit an option, some options to council.
Why isn't the park board there?
Joe's just not gonna go down the road with us.
That's, that's what I was, what I was.
I'm like you're between me and him.
Well, I didn't make it put that in the hands of our park board.
Yeah, we can do that. And they can do some research and then come back and have the council approve.
It's a good idea.
Excellent idea.
Good idea.
Excellent idea. All right.
Park area, that's a park. Park.
Okay, we've had to, hey, the council gets to decide how long you want to need it.
I would like to hear what those folks have to say.
One, one comment about these, these trees. Those trees, he says, oh, well, they're, they're seven feet tall. Well, they're not gonna remain seven feet tall for the next ten years. You gotta think about what a mature tree looks like.
I have to have two red maples on our property, and I planted one two years ago, and it was about eight feet tall. And now it's probably nine or ten feet tall after a year and a half, so. They don't grow that fast, but they are beautiful trees. I'm not advocating red maples. I've just got two.
Well, a red maple is, is a big tree, yeah. What's a mature tree look like? tree gonna look like?
Yeah.
That was my-
I care that people are happy. That's all I care about.
That was just my suggestion, was to turn it over to the park board, and we have to contact the Cattlerock, because they've got a great walk line there. It's beautiful.
Good, right there.
They've done a good job.
All right.
I think we're reinventing a wheel that's already invented. Shopping malls and these places have trees. They're modified dwarf trees. I don't know about the leaf problem, some green trees are trees, I thought the first term, shed leaves with some dome or evergreens with evergreens, but this is, we're solving, we're usually, when we're problems, they're even solved. I don't know which tree they should get, but there are trees that they get for schools and shopping malls that they don't want to have fifty feet tall.
Sure.
And that's what they buy. And they don't go to fifty feet tall.
Flowering plums, flowering cherries.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anybody else that has, you know?
I've, I've just seen those large concrete containers that can be moved. That is commercial property, and it seems like people are using their own personal opinion about what they want there, and not what's best for commercial property owners in the future or now. You never know when somebody's gonna buy that. Could build a mini Walmart there, you never know. But I think, I think some of those are beautiful. They've got beautiful evergreen shrubs on them, and flowers, and they're beautiful.
Comments on the Council?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay, well, I've heard wonderful idea. I didn't hear committee. I heard board.
Park board, yes. Park board, yeah.
Consensus? Yes, yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes, yes, we have the unanimous consensus.
Uh-oh.
But, yeah.
Joe didn't.
He's gotta, he's gotta take that mouth, okay.
Boy, there's that. Well, then, the next park board meeting is the twenty-fourth.
I'm in for, there is-
Oh, you're so undecided.
The park board meeting may be moved to the twenty-fourth. I don't know by tomorrow.
Okay. Well, speaking of, the park board meeting will be on the agenda. Sure, we'll have fun time with that. And with that, we've covered the official city agenda items. Now we're down to our public comment.
And one person, you guys.
Whoa, okay.
I really like your sweatshirt, by the way.
Hey, here.
We've all seen the Wizard of Oz. Two of us would not like to have a pair of those flying monkeys. And we all remember the end of that Wizard of Oz where the, where there's behind the curtain, and he says, "Oh, don't, you know, believe what you see, don't believe what you hear, just believe what I tell you," you know? And that's what is happening now. I believe our city administration is just saying, "You know what? Don't believe what you see, don't believe what you hear, don't believe what other people tell you, just believe what I tell you." And I don't think that's right. And we have an opportunity now, with the budget coming up, that we can look behind the curtain. We don't have to believe the great Wizard of Oz and, and believe what he tells us. We can actually be a part of the process and look at the budget and decide where we're spending a quarter of a million dollars. And so, I encourage everybody here and people in the city to get involved in that budget process and, and look to see where all this money is going. Because I don't understand why we're paying tens of thousands of dollars to all these outside experts, and yet other cities in our area, Toledo and others, they don't spend even a tenth of that cost on all these experts. So, again, my point is, don't leave the window behind the curtain, get involved, and see what's actually back there and what we're being told is the truth.
All right, excellent. So, that's the only public comment? And with that, having said that, we will, uh, at seven seventeen PM, they'll also be in the panel.